Item four is a public hearing, a first reading, and introduction of an ordinance nominating four county-owned properties to the Alameda County Register of Historic Resources. White Cotton Cottage, San Lorenzo Pioneer Cemetery, Old Castro Valley Library, and Lake Chabot Nike Missile Base. Is there a brief staff report?
Yes, good morning, Supervisors. I'm Liz McEligot from the County Planning Department, and I will, I have a PowerPoint to share with you today about these properties. Just first, very briefly, about the Parks Recreation Historical Commission. The commission is appointed by the Board of Supervisors, and the commissioners represent each of the five districts, and they're charged with overseeing historic preservation efforts in the unincorporated area. The PRHC nominated these four county properties to the county register in accordance with the Historic Preservation Ordinance for the unincorporated county. And this ordinance was adopted by the Board of Supervisors in 2012. The initial additions to the property, or, excuse me, to the register included 11 properties, and no properties have been added since 2014, so this would be the first addition since There we go. And just, I won't read all these to you, but this is the current register, and you'll see it includes properties throughout the unincorporated area. So far, they're all privately owned properties except for Sinola Glen School. The register nomination process is contained in the Historic Preservation Ordinance. Properties can be nominated as landmarks, structures of merit, historic preservation districts, or contributing resources to a historic preservation district. The HPO authorizes the Board of Supervisors, Parks Recreation and Historical Commission, or the owner of the property to nominate a resource. Placement on the register requires consent of the property owner, and the PRHC must hold a public hearing to consider placement of a resource on the register, and they did that in all four cases here. The Planning Commission has to be notified in the case of a nomination of a historic preservation district, and since one of the properties you're considering today would be a district, it was taken to the Planning Commission. And board approval is necessary, again, for placement on the register. The Historic Preservation Ordinance also specifically applies to county-owned properties as well as private property unless the Board of Supervisors votes to exempt individual county projects or categories of county projects. There we go. And this outlines the sections of the ordinance that apply to properties that are listed on the register. There is a process for review of any proposed relocation, demolition, or exterior changes to properties on the register. There are requirements for maintenance of these properties. Also, listed properties are treated as historic resources for purposes of SEQA review, and they are also eligible for the use of the state historical building code in the case of restoration of the properties. And these are the four properties that are being considered. White Cotton Cottage, which is a residence located on the Fairmont campus in Castro Valley, the San Lorenzo Pioneer Cemetery, the Old Castro Valley Library, and the Lake Chabot Nike Missile Base, just outside of the main Castro Valley area. First, White Cotton Cottage. This is a picture of it from a few years ago, and you can see from the map, I know it's a little hard to see, but the Fairmont Hospital is in the lower right corner, and 580 is in the lower left corner, and Fairmont Drive is up to the upper left. The house was constructed in 1903, and until the 1950s, it served as the residence for the facility superintendent. From the 70s to about 2000, the house was used as office space, but it has remained vacant since then. In July of 2019, GSA released a draft environmental impact report for the demolition of the cottage for review and comment. There were several historical assessments that were identified in the EIR that was prepared by GSA, and they all concluded that the building was eligible for the California Register of Historical Resources. So in 2019, the PRHC voted unanimously to oppose the demolition of the building and sent a letter to GSA commenting on the DEIR. In 2021, they voted to approve a resolution saying that the cottage meets the criteria for the Historic Preservation Ordinance and recommending that the board place the cottage on the county register. And in this last February, they voted to reaffirm their previous nomination to the Next is the Pioneer Cemetery. It's located on Hesperion. You can see 238, just to the north, Hesperion going along the left side, and San Lorenzo High School is located immediately to the east, to the right. The cemetery is located on land that was once part of the Jose Joaquin Estudio Land Grant and later owned by John Llewelling and William Meek. The first burial record was in 1853. Between, in the 1920s into 1931, over 800 individuals who died at the Alameda County Infirmary, which is now Fairmont Hospital, were buried in the cemetery. In the 1930s, burials at the cemetery began to decline significantly, and in 1961, the board passed a resolution declaring the cemetery abandoned and dedicating the cemetery as a pioneer memorial park. And this is a process that is contained in state law, so that was in compliance with the state law. In 1963, the board passed a resolution ordering the construction of a memorial at the cemetery, and in 1964, the cemetery officially dedicated as the San Lorenzo Pioneer Memorial Park. And in 1971, it was placed on the California State Register of Historical Resources as a point of interest. And this is an example of some of the damage that's been occurring at the cemetery, and this drew the attention of the PRHC and prompted them to consider the nomination to the county In September of 2022, the PRHC voted to approve a resolution finding that the cemetery meets the criteria in the Historic Preservation Ordinance and recommending that the board place the cemetery on the county register. And again, in February of this year, they voted to reaffirm their previous nomination. The next is the Castro Valley Library, which is located on Redwood Road in Castro Valley. It's served as the county library from 1962 till 2009. In 2021, the County Economic and Civic Development Department released a historic resource evaluation for the library, prepared by Architectural Resources Group. And this evaluation found that the library appears eligible for listing on the Alameda County Register of Historic Resources as a landmark under criterion three. So in January of 2022, the PRHC voted to nominate the library to the register and recommended that the board approve the placement of the library on the register as a landmark. And again, in February 2024, they reaffirmed their previous vote. The last property is the Lake Chabot Mission, sorry, the Lake Chabot Nike Missile Base, which is located just to the southwest of Lake Chabot. The Nike Missile Base was established in 1955 when the U.S. Army acquired the acreage through a lease with Alameda County. The Nike system was the world's first surface-to-air missile system and was intended to defend the U.S. against nuclear armed bombers. The base held both Nike Ajax and Nike Hercules surface-to-air missiles. There were three functional areas, not contiguous, but located in the same general area. The Integrated Fire Control Area is the property under consideration today. It is owned by Alameda County. The other areas are the launch area, the administrative area, and these are currently owned by East Bay Regional Park District. This is a site plan of the missile base. There are currently five buildings on the property, the guard station, quarters building, generator building, corridor building with attached radar storage shed, and the high-power acquisition radar building. And these are some pictures of the buildings. The quarters building is on the left, and the corridor building with the attached radar shed is on the right. And this is another angle of the radar storage shed and then the generator building. In 2020, GSA proposed the demolition of the quarters building and the radar storage shed due to their deteriorated condition, but they have not requested approval of the demolition by the Board of Supervisors. GSA released an initial study to identify potential environmental impacts of the proposed demolition, and the initial study cited an October 2019 Historic Resource Evaluation, which found that four of the five buildings are contributing resources to a California Register of Historic Resources eligible historic district. The quarters building and the radar shed were found in this particular study to not be contributing resources to the proposed district. The PRHC in February of 2020 voted unanimously to oppose the proposed demolition of the buildings on the Nike site, and they sent their comments to GSA. After conducting their own extensive research, PRHC members concluded all buildings on the site are relevant to the history of the site and should be retained. In 2022, the commission voted to approve a resolution nominating the Nike site to the county register as a historic district in accordance with the Historic Preservation And in 2024, they reaffirmed their previous vote. And again, in accordance with the Historic Preservation District, or Historic Preservation Ordinance, because this was nominated as a district, we took it to the Planning Commission on February 20th of this year. While some of the commissioners expressed concern about the cost to the county to maintain the buildings on the site, the commission indicated support for the historic district The Transportation Planning Committee heard a presentation at their March meeting, and they adopted a motion to direct staff to present the nominations of the four properties to the full board and request approval of their placement on the register. In addition, Supervisor Miley directed staff to work with other appropriate county agencies and departments to enable the restoration, excuse me, and maintenance of the properties and consider potential future use. GSA has made some progress in actions to preserve these properties, including tarping White Cotton Cottage and hiring a firm to prepare a feasibility study to consider options for restoration and maintenance. They have made improvements to the Pioneer Cemetery. They've replaced some fencing and concrete wall and have done some repairs to the headstones and sidewalks, and they have also hired a landscape maintenance firm to keep the property in good shape. For the Nike Missile Base, GSA has also hired an architectural firm to prepare a feasibility study for the stabilization of some of the structures on that property as well. And for the library, our Economic and Civic Development Department has engaged a consultant to prepare a feasibility study for a potential reuse of that building. So today, staff requests that your board adopt an uncodified ordinance to place the four properties on the County Register of Historic Resources. Three properties as landmarks, and one property as a historic district, and each of the five properties in the district as contributing resources. And that concludes my presentation, and I will be happy to answer any questions you have.
Any questions of my colleagues before we go to public comment? Supervisor Marquez.
Thank you. Thank you for the presentation. With respect to the White Cotton Cottage, there was reference of Mewikma Aloney stronghold and tribal sacred and cultural gathering place in that location. Has there been any outreach to the Mewikma or Aloney community members?
The PRHC has not done any outreach. Some of the members did some research and did find some of the information indicating that this was a significant location. When GSA did their EIR for the project, they did the, or contacted the tribes and notified them that they could request consultation as required by SEQA law, but the PRHC has not contacted the tribes. They've only done some of the research on their own.
What's from what was required through SEQA? There was no response from the tribe?
No, according to the EIR, there was no request for consultation received from the tribes.
Thank you.
Is there any public comment on this item?
We have in-person speakers.
Do you want to call them one at a time and give them two minutes each?
James Farley.
From Hayward, Calif-- I'm from James Farley. I'm from Hayward, California. I am on the commission, the Parks Rec and Historical Commission, and I am supporting the nomination of the four owned county properties, the Alameda County Register of Historic Resources. White Cotton, the San Lorenzo Pioneer Cemetery, the Castro Valley Library, Lake Chabot Nike Missile Site, and I know I've came up with ideas to help fund some of the preservation on my commission. I've talked about a preservation fee. We issue 4,000 permits every year in unincorporated Alameda County. A $5 fee per construction permit would raise $300,000 in 15 years. Or if we did a $10 fee, it would raise $600,000 in 15 years. So this may help augment some of the cost. I also came up with the idea that maybe we get the board, I mean, we get somebody to have Congressman Swalwell nominate the Nike Missile Site, and we could make it a national park and re-restoreate some of the buildings because, you know, people like to go visit historical sites, and because it's, you know, military, people go to military museums, and this is a whole site, which if the National Park System took it over, it would save the county a lot of money, so. All right, I support the nomination. Thank you.
It's an interesting idea, given that this was a national, they built it and left it. Maybe they can now take care of it. That's a good idea. Any other speakers or the next speaker?
Frank Mellon.
Well, congratulations, Supervisor Hubbard and Marquez. You had a difficult battle to win reelection, and I congratulate you on how well you won You're going to hear plenty of people talking about item four. I'm going to narrow in on the Castro Valley Library, and that's because veterans have long looked for a home. And the Castro Valley Veterans Group is becoming rather a dominant group. The various other posts for American Legion and VFW have floundered around us, and we have been taking them in, and because of the strong unit that we have, we're looking for a home. And so I want to make an offer that the Board of Supervisors hopefully can't refuse. By all means, we respect the whole idea of historical status, preserving the exterior of the building. Let the veterans take care of the inside. We'll take care of the costs. It'll be a good home for us, you'll save some money, and the community will love you for it. Plus, the veterans have a remarkable reputation of inviting other community members in for the things they do. They're available for funerals, they're available for openings of events, and they provide a whole host of services. You would do the Castro Valley community a great service by supporting this going forward, and then having somebody talk with us, and save yourself some of those consulting fees because we've got somebody right in line for you. Thank you for your time. I'm welcome. Any questions?
Message well received. Thank you, Frank. Next speaker?
Lynda Willis.
Hi, my name is Lynda Willis. I live in Castro Valley, and I represent District Four on the Parks Recreation Historic Commission. The Alameda County Historic Preservation Ordinance has strict criterion for placing historic properties on the Alameda County Register of Historic Resources to preserve and protect these properties. The PRHC researched and met all the criterion for nominating these properties to the register. Each property has also been evaluated as historically or architecturally significant by the Alameda County's own historical, architectural, and historic experts. These historic properties all have something in common. Alameda County left them vacant and neglected their maintenance for many for over a half a century. Why do these old properties matter? Historic buildings are a visible record of ourselves and our communities. They connect us to our history and culture. Historic places preserve the human stories of the people who created, lived, and worked in them. So how do these properties today connect us to our county history? So to summarize, the Pioneer Cemetery, 1893, is the resting place of the people who founded and built unincorporated Alameda County from the Spanish land grants to World War II. White Cotton Cottage, 1903, built on Mewikma Aloney land next to the Spring Site, a sacred site, architecturally significant, and home of the first superintendent of the Alameda County Infirmary, the county's first public hospital. The Nike Missile Site, 1955 to 74, one of the 12 anti-aircraft missile sites built around the bay to protect the United States from Russian nuclear attacks during the Cold War. The Castro Valley Library, 1962 to 2009, is a mid-century modern building, partly financed by Castro Valley citizens. It was the heart and intellectual center of Castro Valley for 49 years. The Castro Valley MAC has also voted unanimously several times to protect this building. These properties deserve to be preserved and protected now. Once they're gone, their visual history cannot be replaced. So I respectfully ask for your vote to place each of these historic sites on the Alameda County Register of Historic Resources. Thank you. Are there any questions? Thank you.
Any further deliberation by staff? I just have one question, which is, I note that some concern about cost. So is the next step that we will, I'm loath to vote on something that we don't know what it's going to cost. So I'm okay voting on it, but at some point, I'd like to know what it costs to, what our estimate of cost to repair and put into, if we're going to do it, do it right, have it be presentable and open to the public, and, you know, that one radar storage had a pile of dirt in front of it and weeds growing around it. I'm assuming we're going to clean it up, so, and/or architecturally make it stable, maybe someday open to the public for viewing and going inside and whatever. But what's the plan, I guess, and do we know what that's going to cost at all?
I don't believe we know yet. GSA has started work on feasibility studies that would determine the cost for at least the White Cotton Cottage and the Nike Missile Site. And I guess for the cemetery, they have some idea of the cost with their maintenance contract for the landscaper and some of the repairs that have been happening over the last few years. So what we can do moving forward is consult with GSA on what these costs will be, but we don't have those numbers currently.
Once we take this vote, then we're obligated to maintain, keep everything, like it puts it on a register and therefore you now can't do anything differently with it? Is that right by this action?
So today, you're only being requested to do first read. After your second reading and adoption of the ordinance, the uncodified ordinance, there are obligations for maintenance and restrictions on what can and cannot be done, as well as the process for certificates of appropriation. the process for certificates of appropriation.
We could take action today and then upon the second reading, have more information at that time?
Yes.
That's interesting. Okay. Would that be acceptable to my colleagues if we do that?
Yes. When would it come back? Like, how much time does staff need to conduct that analysis?
We'd have to check in with our colleagues at GSA for that information.
Yeah, we can go back to public speakers who might have questions that we want to ask of them. Let me ask you, Mr. Mellon, I'll ask you, what's your question? That way you can ask us a question.
The veterans are prepared to put the sweat equity in to help that building, the library, become a viable use to the community. So as you're talking about costs, it would do well for those that are wondering to let the veterans help offer what they can to make it more affordable, if you will, for the county. And I was instructed to be able to tell you that.
All right, very good. I see that our esteemed president has joined us, and Frank, thank you for your service. You've sweat enough for us. We'll find a way to make this property the best it can be, but give you a place to live, hopefully, or rather, to have a home, not a home, you know what I mean, a veterans' hall. But let's hear from our president, Miley, who would like to weigh in on this, and we'll take his lead. President Miley, floor is yours.
Yes, good morning, afternoon where I'm at. Sorry, I'm just getting to the meeting, got tied up with some personal business. So I'm not sure where you are in the conversation or the discussion, but all three of these properties, Pioneer Cemetery, White Cotton Cottage, and the Nike Missile Site, as well as the old Castro Valley Library, these are all sites that the community feels very strongly about, the community of Castro Valley, as well as the unincorporated community in terms of preserving these sites as historical sites. When I first joined the Board of Supervisors, I didn't know that we had a Nike Missile Site, nor did I know that we had a library, excuse me, a cemetery that we were responsible for. All this came to light over the course of my tenure on the board. And in order to provide the appropriate maintenance and show the appropriate care and support for the community, we've been working way before the pandemic. These are not new issues. So I know there are new board members, and I think this even predate Supervisor Halbert. We've been working on these matters for quite a while to try to get it to this point to secure these properties in order to ensure that they're properly maintained, preserved, and they show the dignity that the community so very much values. If, you know, I've often tried to push the county to look at itself as a municipal entity when it comes to the unincorporated area over, since I've been on the board for the last 20-plus years, and there's been a lot of movement in that direction. And if we were a city, these items would probably already be indicated as being preserved historically. And as I think the staff's pointed out, this has gone through our Historic Commission, Preservation Commission, they've weighed in, they support it, the community supports it. And in terms of my conversations with GSA, GSA's already begun their efforts at looking at the resources to maintain these properties, you know, some actions have already taken place, but with the board taking action to make them historic, that would also potentially free up additional resources. I also know that, I think Frank just spoke to this, that the community is very much prepared to step up and help support these properties in terms of their future vision for these properties with the resources as well. So this is something that folks really feel strongly about, so I'm hoping the board sees the benefit of moving forward with this because, as I said, this is not something new. We've been working on this for years and years and years, well before the pandemic. And finally, it's getting to this place. It was delayed because of the pandemic, quite frankly, and I didn't want to push staff to do something more than what they were capable of doing based on the amount of time, resources, and energy that we were putting into trying to address all the multiplicity of needs that were coming to us as a result of a worldwide pandemic. So that's my best information I can provide at this point in time, so I'm hoping we can move forward with this. So thank you.
Very good. President Miley, thank you for your comments and also your leadership, especially as you remark, bringing Castro Valley closer into what the county would be as a municipal service provider and noting that if this were a city, it would likely already be done. I think your leadership has helped make this possible. So with that said, why don't you make the motion, President Miley, or do we, we have more comments from the community? They say when you get to yes, that you are there, but if you would like to make a comment, come on up.
We have an online speaker as well.
An online speaker, another online speaker. Well, let's hear, what's your name, ma'am? Let's hear from Linda first, then the online speaker, and then we'll allow President Miley to make a motion.
Yes, Linda Willis, thank you very much. Again, I represent District Four on the PRHC, and I thank Supervisor Miley for his comments. I also just want to, in light of your discussion about cost, to direct you back to the Historic Preservation Ordinance that the Board of Supervisors created in 2012, which made no mention of cost whatsoever in terms of the process for nominating historic properties to the register. So I just ask that you take some time to review the ordinance as well and see what the process is and to assure you that the PRHC has followed all those steps to get to this point. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Online speaker.
Casey Warner.
Hello, my name is Casey Warner. I'm also on the Veterans Commission for Alameda County. One of my recommendations was to incorporate the Veteran Service Officer Office into Castro Valley at the old library site because Castro Valley is very central to Alameda County. So that was one of the recommendations, and that would be one of the uses for the Castro Valley Library Building that I'd like to propose. And thank you very much for the consideration.
Thank you very much. Back to you, President Miley.
Is this a--
Oh, they're going to read the ordinance into the record, if that's okay, President Miley. Please, go ahead.
An ordinance to add four properties to the Alameda County Register of Historical Resources pursuant to Section 1762-110 of Alameda County zoning ordinance.
Move away the balance of the full first reading of the ordinance and move forward to the introduction of this ordinance.
I'll second.
Very good. Roll call vote, please.
Supervisor Marquez?
Aye.
Supervisor Tam?
Aye.
President Miley?
Yes.
Supervisor Carson, excuse, Supervisor Halbert?
Aye. That item passes.